Let's call this meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Jeff?
Excused.
Cindy?
Here.
Nancy?
Yes.
Eric?
Here.
Kurt?
Excused.
Jay?
Here.
Bob?
Excused.
Thank you.
All right, so we just have a quorum. If those who are willing and able would stand for the voluntary pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we have a streamlined agenda today. There are no minutes to approve at this time. So the next item on the agenda is amendment and approval of this meeting agenda. Are there any amendments to this agenda? And do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the meeting agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. Public hearings, we do not have any scheduled at this time. And the next item on the agenda is a bid award. And this is for a ProCom sole source award for the Petersburg Volunteer Fire Department vehicle radios. Sergeant Holmgren is recommending a sole source purchased for the PVFD vehicle radios from ProCom, the vendor who installed and programmed the communication equipment in the remodeled Police Department dispatch office. These radios will integrate with the new communication equipment. And the cost is forty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-four cents for purchase, shipping, and installation. And there was an MVA grant received in 2016 that fully covers the cost of this equipment.
Wow.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved by Member Stan, seconded by Member Stanton Greger, that we approve the sole source award to ProCom for the PVFD vehicle radios. Is there any discussion? Yes, Nancy?
I just have a question. Was there any way we could have done this locally? With a local vendor?
I can speak to that. One of the challenges with the Motorola thing is that there's... We can get better pricing using the government GSA pricing than what can be offered locally. And no one local is on that government pricing model. So we can go out to that. And the vendor we got the grant from is actually Homeland Security. And they prefer us using that government GSA pricing if we can do that. So, and we looked, and there's just no local... Nobody registered on that account.
Yes, sir.
And on that note, so I absolutely understand the federal procurement necessities. But here we're getting fourteen grand for just the vehicle installation. Is there... Would there be any way to be able to have... Devlin, I mean, I know it's probably already approved by Holmgren, but it just seems like that would be... You'd need to be able to keep it within town.
I don't know. I'm not sure, Eric. As I understand it, the bid from ProCom to do it was all-inclusive. So I don't know if they'd break it out. We can go back and ask.
I don't know that we necessarily need to go back to anything. I just wondered.
Yeah. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk call a roll?
Eric?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is visitors' views related to the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Richard?
Hello, I'm Richard Burke. I'm on planning and zoning, but I think I'm kind of representing myself here. I'm here to talk about the airport parking issue that is on the Borough Manager's report. I saw that on his report, he indicates that it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And it includes a bunch of bells and whistles that were never included in my proposal. Things like crushed rock, lighting, and... Yeah, the paint markings. I understand we need to armor the waterline. That's important, can't... But the intent was to... My proposal was to get extra space for parking. We can... I... My desire was for it to be something that we could improve later on. So get the shotrock pad in there. We don't need to maintain it in the winter. We don't need to plow the snow in the winter. If it gets big holes in it, we may need to put a little bit more rock in it to smooth it out a little bit. But it doesn't need to be, like, lowrider capable. And in the wintertime here, oftentimes there's long periods where there is no snow on the ground. So if we hang a sign there, we could save money by not having the obligation to plow it. And plenty of people have four-wheel-drive pickups and stuff if you need to park up there. If you're on your own to get out. So, yeah.
Can you refresh my memory as to the cost that you gave? Or the price that you gave?
The price I gave was fifty-five to sixty-five thousand. And that was for just a shotrock pad in there. I may have neglected to include the arming of the waterline, though, in that cost. But it was just a pad.
And this new pad would just be the improved version of it, but the same size? The one that was a hundred and twenty thousand dollar?
I think Steve could...
I can speak to it whenever the Assembly wants to.
Yeah, go ahead.
I didn't know if Richard was through.
I'm done.
Okay. Okay. I did reach out to Alaska DOT to ask them a couple of things. The first was, would they lease property to the Borough and if there was a charge? The answer is yes, they would consider it. They can't really speak to the charge issue, but in all likelihood, we could get some kind of deal where it was no charge for the Borough to... The caveat on anything when you're dealing with DOT or the state is it's their property, so therefore they get to call the shots as far as how it's designed. And that was very... She was... The lady I spoke to was very upfront about that, that they'd be happy to entertain getting involved with the Borough to talk about it, but we would have to end up signing a maintenance contract with them about what we would do and when we would do it, because they don't have the money to do maintenance. So they would get to outline what maintenance is done and how frequently, and also how it's designed and built. Because it's a state... Ends up being a state project. We get into things like paying prevailing wages. And they're going to... You know, certain things that the state's going to ask for. She didn't get into a lot of detail. You know, basically, she's looking for direction to say, you know, should we start this? Should they get a contract ready? And then you'll go through a fairly involved process to... What are all the things that the state's going to ask for? She's the one that brought up definitely going to have a crosswalk. Probably going to require some kind of, you know, warning lights on the crosswalk, although it's debatable what type. You know, building a pad, they're going to want the muskeg dug out and, you know, shotrock put down. And then some kind of... You know, she did say it does not have to be hard surface, some of it's, we don't have to do asphalt or concrete. Some of this comes into kind of our knowledge of how the community responds to things like that. You know, when I talked about security lighting, for example. A parking lot on the other side away from the terminal is going to get dark at night in the wintertime. And it won't take very long before we'll be getting the phone calls saying, hey, why don't you put security lights out here? So it doesn't have to be done, although I should say that carefully, the state may require it. But you have... You know, my guess is that's going to be asked for people... By people pretty quickly. The other thing, I think, in Richard's originally presentation that he made, they talked about charging for parking. You know, we really don't have the money to afford to hire someone to stand out there. So we're looking at an automated system. They do sell those, some of which are, you know, less complex than others. I do not have a price on what those are. Generally, for something like that, which is very, very low volume, we'd probably be looking at, you know, two gates, entry, exit gate with a coin machine that you stick a few quarters in or something. And then there'll be some repairs to the bike path. Because it'll be on the far side of the bike path, that means traffic's going to be driving back and forth across that bike path, which will damage it. So, you know, when I talked to Carl and looked at it, we were probably looking at some kind of hard surface, probably concrete apron to move you from Haugen into that parking lot. And that allows for lots of vehicles to come and go and not damage the bike path or the apron of Haugen. So it turned... You know, like anything dealing with state property, it turns into a bigger project. They're not really going to allow us to spread four inches of gravel out there and call it a parking lot. That's not going to work. So... But what will work, we don't really know a hundred percent either, to be fair to what Richard was talking about. To get to that point, basically, we're going to have to start working with the state and start having attorneys look at contracts. And DOT, I'm sure, has got a standard one. But they're going to come back and they're going to want it designed a certain way. We'll likely have to provide some kind of drawings. I don't know if they're going to require engineering documents or not, but hopefully not. And we do know that we will have to pay for some kind of compensatory mitigation. So there will be a court permit involved unless the state already has one. She didn't indicate that she did. There's a process to go through to get that. So, you know, again, I think it's, you know, a great idea at some point, but I don't think it's going to come at fifty thousand. I mean, Carl might be able to speak to it better than I can. But it's... If you do all of those things, if the state requires all of those things, it's going to be a lot more than fifty or sixty thousand to do.
Did you have any more to add, Carl?
Not really.
Okay.
Steve covered it pretty well. I think there's... You know, the goal of Mr. Burke is worthy, you know, to look at. It's just... It might be apples and oranges what he thinks could go in and what the state would expect. And we don't really know what the state's going to say. So in my opinion, it's probably better to shoot high and address some things that Steve talks about so that we can... If this goes forward, we can plan on approval instead of a constant revision process until we finally land on something the state's going to approve.
Mr. Marshall?
I did have one more thing. Well, I did speak to Lynette Campbell, and she did indicate that they have the court permits already for that because it's airport property. So a court permit should not be required according to what told me. This parking lot... I designed logging roads for a living as part of the Forest Service. And this is nothing different, at least the pad itself to me, than building a road across a muskeg. Put the fabric out there, you put two feet of rock on it, and you can drive a log truck down it. Granted, I understand the importance of armoring the apron and stuff getting down into it and the waterline. We don't want to break that. And we do have a responsibility for maintaining that bike path if we do something and try to do something on the other side of it.
The problem may be, you know, I know the Forest Service has design standards, and it sounds like the state does too, so... And I'm not sure how much negotiation space we have. But I appreciate that you brought it up. As you've started the conversation, and it may not end up as you originally proposed, but I think people are looking at different alternatives, even if we can figure how parking is laid out at the airport or change where the snow deposit area is. There may be some other options.
And I looked at the triangle again, and a few loads of rock could add six spaces to that.
One of my questions, if I may, that I may propose to that was, would the state consider redoing the existing parking? And the answer was very clear and very short: no.
Okay.
We're dealing with DOT on a fairly regular basis these days. And trust me, it's not on adding things to their maintenance list. It's the exact opposite. So I think that's probably where they're coming from, is they'll likely approve anything that's in their design statement as long as the Borough signs off on, we're a hundred percent responsible for all maintenance. And so, again, that's not a showstopper. It's just, I think, it tells you they're not going to spend money on the existing parking lot, at least from this lady's perspective. They're not going to remove it around. They're not going to fill things in. You know, anything that we... The Borough decides to do, it's going to be on the Borough. Not approached her about, you know, would they be willing to let the Borough go in to that parking and reconfigure it? Have not done that.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, but, you know, I suppose that might... There's some question as far as how much parking do we need? And how much money per parking space do we really want to spend? And if reconfiguring what exists today would gain five or six more spots, and that's all we need, that's one thing. I thought we were... We're looking at more of a, you know, a thirty-space type thing. We're not going to probably get that in the existing space. We'll have to go across the road. So, again, that's going to be one of those questions the Assembly's going to have to kind of weigh in at some point here because it's... It will involve a little more negotiations with the state in some time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
The next item on our agenda is visitors' views unrelated to the agenda. Are there any visitors who would like to speak to items that are not on today's agenda? Hearing none, there are no board commission or committee reports filed. And we have one item on our consent agenda. And that is the approval of the five-year lease rate adjustment for Petro49, Inc. And Petro49, Inc., formerly Harbor Enterprises, Inc., DBA Petro Marine Services, leases land from the Borough that houses their offices, office and facilities. The lease agreement provides the annual rental rate... The lease agreement provides the annual rental rate shall be subject to adjustment at each fifth-year anniversary based on changes in the fair market value of the leased property and improvements owned by the Borough. The five-year rate renewal for the lease was established by an independent land appraiser. And the appraiser has determined that the new annual lease payments to the Borough be seventy thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. And that's up from sixty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-nine cents, which was established in 2012. And if there's no objection to this item, then it will be adopted. Is everyone in favor?
Yes.
All right. We have approved that new five-year lease rate adjustment.
The acres of land is that? Do you have any idea on that? I didn't.
I think it says in the document.
I do not have it on this document, but I would have it in my lease files.
Okay.
I can email you. Okay.
The next item on the agenda is report of other officers. And we have Sam Thompson, who is the BDO Senior Manager, to share information regarding the FY 2017 Borough Audit. Take it away, Sam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the Assembly. So my name's Sam Thompson. I'm a Senior Manager at BDO. We are down here, came in last night to start the financial statement audit for fiscal year '17. Really, this is the seventh time personally I've had the opportunity to come audit the Borough. And I'm always excited to come to Petersburg. And I hope we brought the good weather to stay for the rest of the week. So we'll be here the remainder of the week, heading out on a northbound jet on Friday. And we welcome anyone on the Assembly to come stop by and visit us at any time. We're downstairs in the big training room. We look forward to another good year. Jody and everyone in Finance has the books and records in good order so far from what we've seen and has prepared well for the audit. And we look forward to any questions you may have and getting the audit complete as soon as possible. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
How often does the Borough get audited?
The Borough is audited on an annual basis. So every... Your fiscal year ends June 30th, and we usually come around this... Usually the first or second week of August every year to start the audit. So, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Moving on to the Mayor's Report. Which is not pulling up, just a second. There we go. First item is, we are still seeking letters of interest. The Borough is seeking letters of interest from Petersburg residents willing to serve the community by filling one vacant seat on the hospital board until the October 2017 municipal election. Letters of interest may be addressed to the Borough Clerk and emailed to dthompson@petersburgak.gov, mailed to PO Box 329, Petersburg AK 99833, or dropped off at the Borough Administration Office at 12 South Nordic Drive. The Historic Preservation Commission is still looking for letters of interest for three vacant seats on the commission. Seat one is reserved for an archaeologist or an at-large member, and that term ends 12/31/2017. Seat two is reserved for an Assembly member with a term ending 12/31/2019. Seat three is reserved for a Planning Commissioner with a term ending 12/31/2018. And letters of interest may be submitted to the Borough Clerk as outlined earlier in this report. Municipal elections are coming up, and Election Day is October 3rd. Individuals who wish to run for available seats may file for candidacy from July 25th through August 22nd. Please contact the Clerk's Office for more information. The last day to register to vote for this election is September 3rd. And voter registration forms are available at the front desk of the Borough offices. And as I always do, I remind people to please do register to vote. The next item is an Assembly and Hospital Board Work Session. The Assembly and the Hospital Board have scheduled a joint work session, and that will be held in Assembly Chambers on Wednesday, August 23rd, 2017, at 10:00 a.m. The Alaska Municipal League Summer Legislative Conference will be happening August 16th and 17th in Haynes, and I will be attending. And I will be bringing forth a resolution regarding the Alaska-Canada transboundary waters issue. And this is something that we've noted on a couple times before. And we'll essentially bring that same language forward to AML to approve. There was a meeting on homelessness in Petersburg, which I attended. And there were quite a number of folks there, a pretty good discussion. And anyone else who is interested to join the group for future meetings is certainly welcome to do so. And I don't actually know when the next meeting is scheduled. They may not have calendered that yet. But they usually put those announcements on the radio. And then finally, the National Geographic Expedition Ship Quest. Both myself and the Manager, Steve Geisprich, were among the group of community members invited to tour the new expedition ship, the National Geographic Quest, during its visit to Petersburg on July 31st. And I wanted to thank Dave Berg and Lynn Blad and the Captain of the Quest for having us onboard. And they also made the comment that Petersburg has something very special. And they appreciate the community support they receive and look forward to visiting Petersburg for some time to come. So that was... That was a pretty positive visit. Moving on, we have the Manager's Report.
Just one question on that.
Sure.
So in regards to this Historic Preservation Commission, the seat one reserved for the archaeologist or at-large member, can you clear that up? Is it actually like an official archaeologist or somebody who self-designated themselves as an archaeological buff?
It can be anybody that has an interest in... It doesn't have to be a degreed archaeologist.
Correct.
That's why I think the add-on at-large seat meeting. They would like an archaeologist or someone familiar with that. On the other hand, if not purely an at-large secret person, it would be fine.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am. Property tax invoices were mailed out on July 1st. Taxes will be due on October 2nd since September 30th falls on a weekend. As you heard, our annual fiscal audit will begin August 7th. If the Assembly wishes to meet with the auditors or have questions for them, please stop by this week. Black bear sightings have increased in citizens, actually not just citizens, but the public is reminded to secure trash and pet food to avoid conflicts. If you wear to wear, some people are, the med-pharma return ban in the lobby of the PD is getting regularly used. So thank you for that. Public is welcome to turn in unused medications, but please no liquids, syringes, or other needles. CCAD, Southeast Alaska, you know, our drug task force. Grand Administrators will be here on August 23rd and 24th to brief the PD on grant parameters and specific program requirements. Chief Swihart and Captain Hamilton will meet with the other stakeholders in Juneau on the 25th to finalize our formal agreements. May remember, this used to be managed by CITCA. That's changed, and now we have our... Chief Swihart will be managing it for us. Parks and Rec hired Jamie Eddy as our new community center facility supervisor, replacing Heidi Cabal. Please welcome him to the Parks and Rec team. Jamie brings multiple skill sets and experiences with him to this position, some of them including working for Parks and Rec, teaching for the Juneau and British Road School Districts, and working for the Borough at the Manor. So wish him luck. Police Department put on a great summer camp week of safety. Officer Pop ran a one-week summer camp focused on safety topics, including gun safety, bike safety, water safety, and internet safety. Kids especially loved the donut-making activity. School District teamed up with us last week to offer a week-long garden camp. The team kids were treated to a boating field trip to Fergate Farm, a day at the flower farm, and multiple experiences in the school's garden. Library has got a Pokémon... Oh, excuse me, not library, this is a Parks and Rec. Pokémon Training School is coming eight, August 7th through the 10th. This is a four-day camp to learn all about the ins and outs of the elusive Pokémon and how to catch and train them. So if you're interested, go see Chamber at Parks and Rec. Summer Reading Challenge ended July 16th. Hundred and forty-three kids participated, completing seventeen hundred and eighty learning challenge, which is thanks to Parks and Rec staff for hosting, ended the program pool party and a Papa Bear's Pizza for donating the pizza. Good job on the library putting that on. Library hosted a presentation by James Mofe and David Cowper from the Northwest Passage Expedition Vessel, polar-bound in July, over a hundred attended. And prenatal yoga with Courtney Ferron starts August 9th at the library. Wait lists for elderly housing and assisted living. One empty apartment in elderly housing is being flipped to be filled within the next two weeks. Kids painting will start the elder... Excuse me. Assisted living exterior painting project in August. Public Works Crew rebuilt a block of sewer main on Fram Street between 7th and 8th. They also prepared a large blowout in the 10-inch water main in Fram Street right away above 8th Street and a failed 10-inch water valve at Haugen and 9th Street. We will be working on the cleanup of those areas as time allows. Seaport Dam Project is on hold after they found additional repairs needed to the dam spurway. Short standing wall that forms the seal for the spurway gates requires replacement due to cracking and spalling of the concrete on the reservoir side of the dam. The design contract will be amended to include this work in the construction documents in the project they bid this winter for spring construction period. Harrow's Plumbing recently inspected the sprinkler system at the baler and will provide a report on recommended maintenance to the piping at that location. Penn Stock Clearing Project at the Hydro is now complete thanks to Scott, Carl, and everyone else who's involved in making sure that got done and coordinated. The line crew has completed a service lane extension near the Rock and Road Shop and a service lane extension for Chris Fry Road. The Power and Light Utility will be borrowing Rangle's high-reach bucket truck in mid-August to work on clearing, trimming some of our higher lines around town thanks to the city and the Borough of Rangle for this assistance. Allows us to not have to own one and share a piece of specialized piece of equipment between the two communities. Sandy continues to work on the Siren Grant with assistance from Randy Holmgren. And congratulations to thirteen fire and search and rescue volunteers who are certified in CPR and first aid. Annual picnic for the fire department volunteers and their guests was August 5th. Based on the weather, I'm sure they had a really good time. And we put out thanks to Devlin and Yanning Electric for helping us out with some server room activities. And we are adding several backup UPS units to our system to avoid hard crashes on some of the older equipment located in the showroom. They have... Devlin's doing the moving and adding these, working on making sure we have the right plugs to plug our UPS units into. And I've already spoken on the last item, but on the... And I've already spoken on the last item, but on the Alaska, reaching out to Alaska DOT. At some point, you know, we'll need the Assembly to decide if you want us to spend resources on this and, you know, start the design process and figuring out what the state's going to require. And if, in fact, we have to do any kind of mitigation, if they have a core permit that helps, we may still be asked to set aside a certain amount of land because we would be taking it up and taking it out of the wetlands inventory. So, again, not sure how the state does their core permit, so we'll figure that out if it gets to that point. The last piece of that, too, is, you know, we've got some fairly significant concerns about cars crossing the bike path. You know, we tried to build that into this, which is some kind of warning signs slash gates on either side of the driveway going into that so that as cars come and go out of a parking lot, that they realize they're crossing a bike path, so that we don't end up hurting someone. So, again, we think that's probably going to be a requirement the state would have anyway. So, you know, I'll keep trying to get as much information as I can from the state for free, but at a certain point, we'll end up having to, like I said, start getting a little more serious about what they're going to require. So, that's it.
I had a question on, just out of curiosity, do we know how many kids attended the police department safety camp?
No, I do not. I do not.
Sounded like a fun program.
Yeah.
And I was able to sit in on the presentation at the library from the Northwest Passage Expedition, which was absolutely fascinating. It was standing room only, but I appreciate that the library is making those opportunities available to the public. Really pretty fascinating and a nice way to tap into folks who are traveling through this community. Anybody else have any questions? Yeah, Nancy.
Yeah, when you speak of crossing the bike path, anybody know what's going on up there now?
I do not, Nancy.
There's a, somebody cut a swath, I don't know, four feet, and they've got it dug up, they're digging it up. I just wondered if, Richard says it's not part of his plan. Go ahead.
Members, I think, I'm not sure, but I think that they were going to do some work to install a culvert across the bike path. Is this right up by the airport, across from the DOT shop?
Right, across from the long-term, present long-term parking.
Yeah, that section in between the path and the, and Haugen Drive was holding a lot of water, and so I think they're going to install a culvert so that that drains out.
Any other questions? All righty, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have unfinished business. Ordinances for third and final reading. The first item is ordinance 2017-11, an ordinance of the Petersburg Borough adjusting the FY 2018 budget for known changes. At the June 19th, 2017 meeting, the Borough Assembly voted to proceed with a loan application to ADC for the Casino Street sewer main replacement in the amount of $160,000. The preliminary loan application has now been submitted, however, the project needs to be included in the borough's FY 18 capital project budget. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Stanton Gregor, seconded by Member Strand, that we approve ordinance 2017-11. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Will the clerk call a roll?
Nancy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And ordinance 2017-11 is approved unanimously. The next item under unfinished business is ordinance 2017-12, an ordinance amending Section 4.24.050 of the Petersburg Borough Code relating to property tax exemptions to include the State of Alaska optional exemption for approved fire protection systems, and directing that the amendment be submitted to the voters of the borough. On June 12th, 2017, the governor signed SB 100 that turned the mandatory property tax exemption for structures with sprinkler systems into an optional exemption. In Petersburg, all tax exemptions must be approved by the voters. This would simply retain the sprinkler exemption into future years, and the cost of that exemption at this time would be $3,292. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Castro, seconded by Member Strand, to approve ordinance 2017-12. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk call a roll?
Nancy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And that motion, that ordinance passes unanimously. We have new business, the security assignment of a lease. Southeast Island Fuel subleases the property that houses their gas station from Petro49, Inc., and is applying for a loan to purchase new pumps and equipment. First Bank is requesting a security assignment of lease as collateral for the loan to KC Sales, Inc., DBA Southeast Island Fuel. The security assignment provides that in the event of default by Southeast Island Fuel under the lease, or default by Southeast Under Island Fuel under the loan documents in favor of First Bank, First Bank will have the option to acquire Southeast Island Fuel's interest under the lease for the unexpired term. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Stanton Gregor, seconded by Member Strand, that we approve item 17-208, security assignment of lease. Is there any discussion? Yes, Eric.
As for their gas station, is this the one on the fuel dock, or is this right next to the coffee shop, Common Grounds?
It's the vehicle, the vehicle gas station, not the fuel dock.
Okay.
Because it's owned by KC Sales. Yeah.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. Will the clerk call a roll?
Nancy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And that item passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is communications. Does anyone have any communications to report? And seeing none, the next item is assembly discussion items, and recognitions is up for grabs. Does anyone have any recognitions? Yeah.
Yes, I'm going to be pleasantly persistent, broken record, and please register to vote. And once you've registered to vote, vote.
All right. Any other items? Any other recognitions? And then the next item on the agenda is the electric department management, and I would actually prefer to postpone this discussion until there's a full assembly installed and to give some time to make progress on the identified priority projects that Carl laid out at the last meeting, but I will defer to the rest of you.
No, without.
I mean, I'm curious as to how the interim process is going, but, you know, it would be best probably to have a full quorum or a full group complement.
You're welcome to ask Carl a question if you want.
No, I, yeah, I suppose, how has the interim gone so far between Scott and Carl? Man, is everything working well?
Yeah, everything's doing good on our end, hearing none. It seemed to be doing good. Sue and Em's been really good to help me upstairs with stuff I haven't been, and the girls, and everybody's picked up and, you know, all the guys, you know, picking up slack, and everything seems to be working pretty good. Yeah.
Nice, thank you.
I'll echo Scott's comments. I think it has worked out well so far.
Well, I'm glad to hear that you've had good weather, so you haven't had to deal with the buckets to protect the equipment from what a leaking roof. Well, that is the last item on our agenda, and so at this point, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.